I just started recording.
Okay, is Linda on?
I haven't seen her yet.
Okay.
And Eric may not know that it's at six thirty.
Uh, Eric is.
He's not able to come.
Not able to come today.
Okay, kind of a trade show or something he said.
Yeah, he's somewhere.
Eric's the new.
Eric's the new rep.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, Eric, oh, and instead of Kate, what else? They moved things around?
They did.
They did. She took over his chair and she's, she's doing conservation. Eric's taking this and I forget what else he's taking.
Two, five of them.
Two, two, right.
Yeah, he's taking, yeah.
All right, let's come to order. This is the Enfield Planning Board. It is March twenty second, twenty twenty-three. Six thirty, we are in the Enfield D P W conference room. And we are also on Microsoft Teams. Yes, Linda is signing in.
Yeah.
Let me wait till she comes on.
There she is.
Hi, Linda. Can't hear you.
Hello, I was on mute, sorry.
Okay, so um, first a little announcement, uh, which we were sort of talking about before we started. Uh, Kate has moved off of our board and gone to the Conservation Committee. To be replaced by Eric Russell, who was a member of our board for quite a number of years. And I'm very happy to have him back and look forward to working with him. He can't join us tonight because he is manning a trade show booth at some convention somewhere. And I have this strange feeling that when I talk to him, he's at the same trade show as one of my kids is at with one or two booths, but that remains to be seen. So. Next item on the agenda is public comments. Nobody here from the public? So then we will go on. Minutes of our March eighth meeting. On the table for discussion, any comments, questions, or corrections? Oh, wait, before we do that. Because Linda is on uh, Teams and the rest of us are here, we will do a roll call. Members present, starting from my lab with Dan.
Ted Kylie.
David Frack.
Phil Vermeer.
Brad Rich.
Tim Jennings.
Kurt Conhertz.
Jim Bob.
Staff members.
Whitney Banker.
Rob Taylor.
And on the video.
Linda Jones.
Okay, now we'll go on to the minutes. Any questions, comments, or corrections?
I did not find any error.
Yeah, I thought Whitney did another fantastic job.
Yay, Whitney!
Yes. I motion that we accept the minutes as is.
I'll second.
Motion made by Brad, seconded by Linda. All in favor, say aye.
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 All, all opposed. Extensives. All right, Tim is abstaining.
I was not here.
He was not here. Uh.
May I make a comment?
You may.
Um, while I had every intention to work on the minutes that you guys so graciously decided to, or allowed to table for a while, I ended up with a family emergency. I ended up taking a trip and I just couldn't get into it, so. Uh, but in the end, I think they're, they're sufficient, so thank you.
Okay. Okay, we have no select board report because we have no select board person. I am not allowed to appoint any of the alternates to replace our select board member, but they may participate in the discussion. Just can't vote. There are no hearings, no conceptuals, and we'll get to old business. Without objection, I'd like to reverse the order and say a couple of brief words on mapping.
How do you do that? I've got a, I, I don't know why we can't continue to have the details of the old business printed out on this list here.
We have the minutes. These, that was all we talked about.
Well, I understand that, but um. Couple of things that I, I think are old business. Information about the grant that we may or may not be applying for, uh, is a topic that we just should continuously be on here until we get that resolved.
You mean the, the grant for the consultant?
Yes, yeah. Uh, or any other grants that are available. Just an update on that. This should be an item, I think, on, on the old business. And then the uh, the thing that Kirk brought up some months ago about the.
Building heights?
Uh, well, no, no, the um, the handout for the audience, uh, not trying to be ever dispensed with that.
Preachers.
Uh, again, that just should be an item, so, so there's two things at least, and I think there may be even another item or two that just should just be listed out, whether or not we need to talk about them that particular night or not until they're actually completed.
Well. To your point, the thing that Kurt brought up several months ago about the handout on our procedures, I believe we decided that the appropriate time to discuss that would be at our organizational meeting in May. Do you see a need to put that on every single minute as old business between now and May?
Yeah, I would. Anything that we start talking about as a element of business that we don't finish or complete, we just leave it on the list and keep deferring it as necessary till we have it dispensed.
Just keep it as a placeholder?
That's all, you know, just so we don't forget that we, we do have that thing hanging out there.
I mean, I, I agree with Tim's suggestion because I think that's one of the problems we've had in the past, where things come up, internal discussions, and a, a month goes by, it wasn't brought up again, another month's go by and people forgot it even existed. And then six months go by and go, oh, I wonder what happened to such and such. And now it's too late because we're working on town meeting stuff.
Linda, a comment?
No.
Okay. Um, Rob, can we try to make that change?
Give me the list, I'll, I'll have it right now so I put them on the next agenda.
So it's the consultant grant, for the lack of a better term?
Yeah.
And um.
Public hearing, public hearing.
Procedures.
Procedures. Rules and procedure?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, you mentioned May for um, board collections and all that good stuff. Are we, I think it was May last year because town meeting was late.
No.
Because we're an appointed board.
Right.
And the appointments happen in May.
Oh, okay, okay, okay. All right, I.
So it's different for uh, an elected board versus appointed?
Correct.
Interesting.
I can't tell you the history on that, but uh.
Cause it's a new board that has to appoint them.
Right. Alisa sent around a memo which basically states that and that's what we do.
Anybody's term that runs out, they have to have it into Alisa by, been time for the April seventeenth meeting of the select board.
Anything else to make sure stays on the list of old business?
Seems like there is, but I can't think of it. I wasn't, I wasn't, this wasn't on my mind when I.
Well, you could add, um, because it's been an off and on discussion we had regarding building heights, um, requirements. And I talked to Phil nearly at town meeting and he said he'll be happy to come and discuss that along with other fire department issues, driveway access, private road access. Anything that's fire department related, he's willing to have a discussion with us.
Then, now that actually may be part of the the work session effort. I mean, it's not something we're going to take separate from considering, I think, new, new.
Rewriting of zoning.
Yeah, we sort of like invite, as a reminder, to invite Phil to a meeting. Um, you know, as we work with all kinds of schedules, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
If you think of anything else, let me know.
So at our last meeting, uh, Kate suggested that we all read the section of the handbook, the chapters starting on
What are you reading?
Page forty-three inches, section one point four.
Yeah.
On the conservation subdivision type of zoning. Has everybody had a chance to take a look at that?
Yeah.
Good.
Oh, yeah.
So, there, there's a lot.
As I was reading it, I'm going, who eats this stuff?
Probably.
That's their job.
That's their planners and lawyers.
Very um, it struck me as complex and could get really um, misconstrued.
This was, this entire book was written with a federal grant by the ten um, planning commissions in the state of New Hampshire.
Yeah.
Uh, and one, one thing that, that is that I noticed, so it's, it, it, it was, it was published in two thousand eight.
Yeah.
So it's already fifteen years.
Eighteen years old.
And, and most of the references, I was looking at some of the footnotes, or some studies done in the nineties.
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
So I, 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 I was fascinated with the, the, the chapter. Seemed like a lot of good ideas in there that we want to consider. Um, but I'm wondering is um, is there a newer version of that?
Our consultant will know, but.
I, I don't think the state has updated it. I mean, there are certainly updated best practices that our consultants will
Yeah.
have a handle on. So, you know, we, we work with what we have and we improve on it. I think that's the only thing that we can do when we have a two thousand and eight document. As Tim said, there are some very interesting concepts that we might want to apply.
I got a different one.
No, that's, that's different.
It's different.
Different. This is, we thought we had an update, but I don't think so.
So. Boiling it down to its
Okay.
most basic um, concept. It, it kind of looks to me like it's a variation on the cluster development theme.
Yeah, yeah.
Would everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
And rather than just limiting it to common land, um, it instead says the common area or the non-owned areas should be conserved by one of several different possible ways.
Do we have any of these in Enfield at the moment?
We have a, the availability of the cluster development.
Yeah, but nobody's used it.
Now, there was, there was one.
One.
On Upper Methodist Hill Road, Rock Ridge, I think it's called, um.
It's Birch Lane.
Yeah, and the, the zoning is five acres. They were allowed to do, I think, half, so two and fifty percent reduction. So two and a half um, acre lots and then the whole backsides that a bud's wheel back was conserved. It was. I mean, that's what was written at the time.
Yeah.
I mean, if I was doing it today, I would probably go even smaller acreage, one acreage.
Yeah.
Um, like a one acre, half, one and a half acre, um, and have.
And did, did that implementation go smoothly, or do, does anyone recall?
I don't know, it was.
Yeah, it went smoothly. There was no audit, so it was. Yeah, there was supposed to be a second, because it was going to be about twice that size.
Yeah.
And of course, at the time it was done, the market was, market did the same thing like at Laramie Farms where the market went down the tubes. So they never did the second half, the phase two piece.
So, so we really don't know. A did the developer realize potential of the, the economic gain in his, his case? Did we create enough housing because of it? Did we conserve enough land because, in other words, it's hard to say that really accomplished what people had in mind. We don't know.
Right, we don't know. The, the, the hard thing about even that property, yeah, they conserve fifty percent, but it was fifty percent that never could be developed because it was all steep slope.
Yeah, yeah, it would have been more difficult, yeah.
It would have been, you couldn't.
According to the thing that we read, the, the non-buildable area needs to be subtracted.
Right.
From the, the whole thing.
Well, you, you probably could have, but it would have been expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It would, it, I mean, if you've been up there, it's a nice little development because it sits on a ridge.
And like you say, it, well, I mean, the, the current owners are probably very happy.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they, I mean, the houses were selling for good money.
Oh, yeah, they're, they're all.
Highest quality built-in.
Yeah, they were.
The lots.
It was very nicely built property.
Yeah.
But you probably could have, as you say, if the lot sizes were smaller, there might have been twice as number of half, half.
Clearly.
Oh, yeah.
That's not on town soon, is it?
No.
No.
Yeah, so that would be the limiting factor for.
Right.
Lots.
When was that built? Do you remember?
Nineties, two thousand. Two thousand, early two thousands.
Two, yeah, early two thousands.
Yeah.
So that was probably right around the time when people were starting to transition from a house in the middle of a large lot to smaller, easier to take care of.
Right.
More compact development.
I mean, it was, I mean, from the developer's point of view, he probably looked at his road, how much road he had to build. He said, this is the cheapest way to do it.
Right, and he, he also went with, because he had a quick access to eighty-nine.
Yeah.
From there.
Well, I, I, I like the concept. I mean, we have in the master plan guidance to preserve open space.
Yeah.
Reserve the rural character. I mean, that's a little subjective as to what that actually means, but um, in the hand, i- i- if you take the R five district, and I don't know how many lots are out there that are of considerable size, we get people that own those that don't want to do anything, and they're happy with what they have, but eventually that lot will sell and new owner will have different ideas. So I guess you have to approach each of these big lots as if eventually someone will do the max they can, right? That, that what we do?
I, I don't know that we'd approach it with the idea that every lot is going to be developed to the maximum. That, that doesn't strike me as, as a a valid generalization, because I think there are some people that are going to want to have a lot of land because.
Just because.
Well, it's a matter of timeline.
Because, right, exactly.
Timeline you're working at.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Um, if it's not permanently conserved, eventually it's going to get developed. It's just a matter of when.
Yeah, I mean, you know, okay, yeah, let's, 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 let's look at a hundred years.
How quickly will it likely grow?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, if, if I've got a large parcel, I, I, I guess I'm, I'm thinking that um, owners would want to have as, as many options as they could, you know, to exercise as long as they conform with, with the master plan and the zoning. And currently, right now, if it's five acre zone and you can split that lot into five acre parcels and you sell as many as you have access to and buildable land and so forth, that's going to vary from lot to lot. Um, and it seemed like these the chapter we read was talking a lot about how that was sort of the baseline for how many homes you could put on the parcel, and then from there, you did the conservation program. You reduce the impact on the property in a smaller spot, but you put the same number of houses on it, or maybe even more. Yeah.
Yeah.
That, that's the general concept, right?
Right.
It's almost like you give people points for conserving land by saying, okay, you've got, you've got a hundred acre lot, you could put twenty houses on it, but if you put it within this area and conserve the rest, we'll let you put twenty-five, or we'll let you put thirty because you're conserving all that other land.
Right, if anybody has um, this document open on page forty-five. Hi, Seeley, how are you?
I'm good.
What chapter are you looking at? Uh, we're looking at the chapter on, on conservation um, subdivisions.
Okay.
And there's a section beginning on page, I guess it's page forty-five.
Yeah, forty-five.
Of the PDF called, How Should The Number Of Units Allowed Be Determined?
Yeah.
And they give some uh, mathematical formulas by which you determine that. And they talk about.
But they're suggestions, right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, these are all, yeah.
They're all suggestions.
They're all suggestions, you know? If, if we decide to implement this, we could come up with our own formula. And you know, having a formula, I think, is a good idea as a starting point so that developers and planning boards have, you know, a, a common set of rules.
It's going to be consistent.
And then, you know, you can negotiate, you can, you can wage, you can have special exceptions, whatever. Or you can have, you can have density bonuses. And, you know, i- is that something that we think might be applicable in this town?
Well, is, is, is that the current thinking on this sort of? Again, we're reading two thousand eight based on a lot of information earlier than that, so um. But, because I'm wondering, to me, I, you, you, you mentioned, Brad, really early, that it seemed complicated. And, and I, I was looking at it too and saying, oh my gosh, uh. Well, what? What I guess I would prefer seeing is that you, you take a hundred acre parcel, it's fictitious parcel. And you have a system where you can subdivide it a number of ways. Traditional zoning of five acre lots, we might want to ask ourselves, is that even something that's desirable? As much as you have. Just a.
Checkerboard.
Checkerboard.
Yeah.
You're not really.
Right.
Creating any wildlife conservation or anything and all the reasons why. So maybe that's a question right off the bat.
Yeah, um, so, I don't want to interrupt you.
Go ahead.
But just on that point, I think one of the big questions we have to ask is, do we want to make it mandatory or optional?
Let, let me, uh, if I'm remembering correctly from our current set of regs and cluster developments, it's mandatory for ten or more, I, I don't remember if it's lots or, or houses.
Building.
Building, you have to do, you have to be, yeah, that was one of them, because it was a whole other from a previous version, basically, um. So, yeah, it's, if it's going to be just, if it's just you'd subdivide and then sell individual lots, that's one way, or if, and then you can say either it's mandatory or optional then. Or you do it like currently, is it's a developer and he builds the homes. Well, most of the time, it seems to be that it's subdivided lots and they're sold individually.
Right.
And someone else builds the homes.
Yeah.
That seems to be the most common trend.
Tim, I was going to just say, you were asking about sort of current thinking in this, and I've been to a number of planners' conferences lately where uh, density bonuses and other bonuses are offered now for affordability.
Right.
For workforce housing.
Yeah.
And so that sort of falls in, a lot of the stuff they're trying to teach people like me is about inclusivity and equity and those kind of things, and I think that's a good sort of noble goal to have too, because right now, we're basically pricing out anybody that doesn't have big money, you know, so. It's, it's something to think about, especially for density, you know, the affordability. I think in Maine, there's a couple of the cities in Maine, they've talked about like bonuses for if you have ten percent of the units that are affordable in, in, in a development.
You get a ten percent.
Yeah. Exactly.
And I think that's the big change from when this was written to today, is the workforce housing piece, because it wasn't an issue back in the nineties.
Yeah, it wasn't ever discussed, but the only problem I have with any kind of special density bonus is the enforcement. And especially if you're working, if it's for workforce, workforce housing or low, or affordable housing, or whatever you want to call it, it has to be enforced by somebody.
Well, and it, it also can't be on empty lots. You can't, you can't use the, we're going to sell you lots, because the, the, the housing has to be built in order to get
Right.
an affordable housing.
I mean, it works great with apartments.
Right.
And, but you still need that enforcement factor to make sure that that apartment is always sold at a affordable X, X dollars.
These, yeah.
Well, but do we even know? What is affordable housing? What does that mean?
Let me tell you, it's, it's, it's pretty high up in the upper valley.
Well, it, you, you could probably run through some data and make some calculations and come up with a number, but that is so hypothetical. I don't, I don't think you could really say.
It's the.
Well, yeah.
The values, draft and count, values, draft and county as a whole.
Right.
They do it by county.
Yeah.
And then it's a percentage of the median income for the county.
Right.
I forget what the percentage is. I don't know if it's eighty percent or less or of the median.
That's how they get to it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But it's going from Berlin and Stewartstown all the way to Hanover, so it's like.
Right, but you know, there, there is, there is data available where we could determine, or somebody could determine the affordable, the, you know, where, where the number is for affordable housing for the town of Enfield. I, I think the master plan has some stats on that. I can't recall from the top of my head.
We had it, it, we, we talked about it.
It's there, yeah.
It's there.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, I think we're kind of tied into using that federal definition, especially if we're going to be applying for any grants or helping the developer apply for any grants to, to subsidize the building of affordable housing, which I, I think that's the way things are going on a national level, because without a subsidy, you can't build affordable housing, period. End of statement.
Well, I, and, and I don't think, I don't, I don't think the, the grant program is going to make a, or the, the options that you might have in a grant are not going to result in a significant enough of affordable housing or workforce housing, we're going to call it being created. It, it will help. It'd be a hell of a lot of an effort on somebody's part to pull that off. But I don't think we want to have the zoning coordinates uh, sort of centered around that. It, it seems to me a really complicated process that w- we just need to allow for the, the increased density in places we want. w- we just need to allow for the, the increased density in places we want. And if it makes sense in any particular development for the, the town employees to get involved in a, in a grant program or the Upper Valley Land Trust or whoever, not the Land Trust, Twin Pines, then great. But what we, what I often see is that all that effort goes into a project and then they find the zoning won't allow it.
Right.
Or put some kind of hindrance in front of it that kind of spoils the whole process. And that's what I'm hoping we can avoid.
Yeah, because I don't, I, I agree with you, Tim. Affordable housing is not gonna make it in this area because the markets, the market's so much above what the affordable number would be that the, the developer couldn't afford to, to, to have apartments even out there at an affordable rate. The only, the only way that happens is if the town is the person that builds it. Or if it's Twin Pines or somebody like that.
Yeah.
And they're the owner. It's like the one next to the Mascoma Bank in West Lebanon.
Right, and Shetland, and maybe eventually will become something like that.
Right. That one, because.
So you, you knock off ten or a dozen units like that and you're, and you pat yourself on the back and.
Right.
Okay, but that's about as much as we're gonna be able to accomplish that way.
Do, does anyone know if, you know, a developer is gonna build, say, fifty units? If they work their numbers so that the rents are such that the market rate rents are used to, in essence, subsidize the workforce housing at a lower rent? Is that done?
They've done that. They just did a Claremont on Pleasant Street. That was, I mean, what they're finding, uh, to what you were just saying, to what you were saying.
Yeah.
Is instead of building a purpose-built development just for low income, is that it makes more sense to have mixture, you know, to have a development or a project have a variety within. And I think that, you know, removes some stigma, obviously, so it's not projects like the old days they used to do. And it, and it sort of works better to mix them in and have some of these federally subsidized.
And those five units are Section Eight federally subsidized units.
Right, and, and, and the unit, the unit that might be subsidized is no different.
Is no different than any of the others.
Correct.
Right.
So if our zoning allows for the building in the first place with, uh, large density and, and the number of housing, as, as much as possible that we put there, uh, then, then if, if and when there's a program that can piggyback on that.
Yeah.
Then great.
And it's up to the, it's up to the developer to go get that. It's not, it shouldn't be, you know, we can, we, as a town, could write a letter of, you know, support for something like that, but I don't think.
But you could get a bonus, like, I mean, if a developer is willing to do that, and that's what Portland, Maine, when I went to one of the seminars.
That's what I mean, yes.
Yeah, they had voted in Portland, I think the planning office had put for a ten percent.
Right.
Bonus and density if they made the units affordable. What was interesting was that the city sort of took it even further and they said, make it twenty percent. And I think that the, the planning office in Portland had said, you think you may have taken it too far because now the developers are gun-shy. That's too much that's gonna interfere with their return on their investment, blah, blah, blah.
And it's gonna interfere with the market.
Exactly. My question to that would be, if, if the town is okay with a development, development that's ten percent more dense than what it would have otherwise been, then it's okay with a development that's ten percent bigger than it, for whatever reason.
Right.
So you might as well just, just build that into the, to the arrangement in the first place and then capture what you can with, with subsidized units.
Well, I mean, the thing is, my, from my reading of these different product news articles and cases on the affordable housing, it's always seems to be apartments with water and sewer. Because that's the only way they can make the numbers work.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, so that, that right there eliminates where in town you could even offer a density for a low income. Because they're not gonna build stick house, individual homes.
Right.
Out in three acre, five acre parts of town and, and make some of them affordable, you know, much less expensive, because they can't build them for that cost. The only way, it's just when you add another, a few extra apartments onto a pre-existing or another level, level of floor on a pre-existing building.
But they might be able to build townhouses with a, with a, a common sewer system.
Yeah, we just don't maintain.
Or manufactured housing.
Or manufactured housing.
Or here, here, here's another concept that is current with the planning world. And in, in that concept, a developer who wants to build in town with municipal sewer can get a density bonus by purchasing the development rights from a guy out on the Canaan line who owns a hundred acres. So the scheme there is the guy with a hundred acres, he doesn't lose the economic value of his land. The developer from in town buys the development rights at market value. That land is permanently put into conservation, whether the town holds the conservation easement or Upper Valley Land Trust or whatever. And the developer in town, because he's conserved some land out near Canaan that has, you know, a nice view or is agriculturally productive or whatever, um, he gets a density bonus of ten percent or fifteen or whatever it happens to be. So that's, but you're still, that's just one more.
This is just this development that's ten percent more dense.
Right.
If you're happy with that in the end, why don't be happy with that in the beginning? I, I don't get the.
Well, I mean, it's in the areas that you would most likely get the denser developments, that you want the denser developments, right, just build it into the factor so you don't have to do all this legal, legal work.
We've already built it into the defect, into it if you've got water and sewer.
Yeah, but you allow.
If you've got sewer.
Yeah, we just approved a quarter acre lot for water sewer.
Right.
Now it's a matter of just how high you want to go. And your setback requirements, your dimensionals.
Right.
For the building. Um, and.
We've done that, but I don't think we.
Well, we did, we did the hard size, not the, anything else.
A lot of, a lot of.
Right, we did the hard size, but nothing else, but, but it's, but my discussion is getting the town involved in all these legal issues and then the enforcement. One thing to have the, the one-time lawyer write up the documents, our lawyer, town lawyer reviews them, we sign off for it and we walk away.
Right.
Five years down the line, all of a sudden there's a problem because somebody's not following the rules. Now you have to go to court to enforce it. And the town's saying, well, it's not worth it.
Now, I could see where, um, let's say a, a lot's being developed. Maybe they want a little bit more of it, whatever we determine the number is that should be conserved. Maybe that conserved part doesn't have to be even adjacent to that lot.
What you're saying.
Well, that's what, yeah.
That's the scheme I was describing.
But, but what we, what we could do there though is it's not tied to any formula or anything. It's just the way the thing evolved. I can, you know, I can put in ten more houses here or eight more or four more, whatever that, in, in, in exchange for that, would you all consider me buying that hundred acre parcel over there and putting it in conservation?
Right.
Well, you wouldn't even have to buy the parcel, you'd just have to buy the development rights.
Right.
Because.
Or, or buy a conservation.
Yeah.
That's all you have to buy.
Either way, you know, I mean, the.
They grant it to the.
Granted, yeah, exactly.
You know, the, the, the ultimate goal here is, well, one of the ultimate goals is to not develop that hundred acre tract out by Canaan.
Yeah.
So I, I think by offering an incentive to the guy who wants to build twenty-five apartment units in town, it's, it becomes a win-win. If you just say the guy in town, instead of building twenty-five, he can build thirty. Or s- you know, what, whatever the number happens to be, with no incentive to buy or to, to help in the effort to conserve the land out by Canaan, um, you only accomplish one of the goals, that being increasing the density in town.
But you also just increase the, the cost to the developer, which means it's go, the units are gonna rent for more money and are gonna sell for more money. Um, because he's gotta go buy this other parcel and go through all the legal hullabaloo over it. And I think it's like, someone was telling me the other day, it's like fifteen thousand dollars to get a property through that process of.
Right.
Call it a. And, uh.
In order for the Upper Valley Land Trust to take it.
Yeah.
The easement process.
Right, because.
Right, there's, right, there's upfront costs to have a, just to put an easement on a piece of property because somebody has to do the long-term monitoring of that property and have a fund to go to court to protect. To defend it when it gets violated.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. And, and that's the issue with the town going like, with the town holding the easement, the town's gonna say no.
Yeah.
But, but we're just gonna ignore it.
But organizations like the Upper Valley Land Trust, they actually do that.
That's by law, right. That is their mission.
Yeah. They take people to court if it gets violated.
And they roll with it, and they roll, because that is federally required to, for them as their mission to take that person to court. But that's why they ask for the money upfronts to go into the fund.
Right.
Yeah. Interesting.
So Rob, is there any way that the town could change its enforcement methods so that somebody who is not doing what the law requires, um, in essence, gets a ticket rather than a letter from Rob, which eventually winds up going to court or going nowhere?
That's a good question. Typically, we have, I mean, on the advice of our attorneys too, we don't get involved in the private deed restrictions and covenants.
Right.
Right.
You know, somebody sells a lot and they put in the deed not to be further subdivided. Well, I've been advised literally by our attorney, that's not our problem.
That's not our deed.
Right, right.
Right.
Right, which is why you, you probably have to put in it that not only there has to be a conservation easement, but it has to be held, with, with, held by the Upper Valley Land Trust.
Yeah, yeah.
And you're the one that's going to pay the fifteen thousand dollars to do it.
Yeah, or equivalent.
Or equip, right.
So to get back to the hundred acre parcel.
Yep.
Um, I, I don't know any other way to do this other than perhaps just be an arbitrary number, but eighty, twenty seems to be a split, we could consider, so eighty percent conserve, twenty percent do anything you want with.
Yeah.
It's, it's the, it's the twenty percent, the buildable part that just throw this out there. The number of, of houses that you could put on that or duplexes or whatever it is you're gonna build there I think should be determined by the, the characteristics of the land itself, just and the market. Uh, there's so many other influences that will, that will go in to the design of that development that I don't even know why we need to say you, you're limited to twenty or, or ten or whatever.
That becomes the question is, if I say I'm going to, I'm going to put eighty percent into conservation, then the developer's going to find the market and the only thing we say is you've got to meet the setbacks.
Yeah, and the subdivision regulation.
And the subdivision regulation, but one of those is not that it has to be three acres or anything. It's, you have to build on that twenty percent building envelope. It has to be contiguous. And if, do we really care how many units he puts on that? Is there anything, here's one, is there anything wrong with Lower Shaker Village?
Talk to the people that live there, they'd say no.
Right. There's not a single lot in there that meets any, you know, density requirement.
Right, I mean, I'm, I mean, we could say that, but far as the conserved, for the calculation of number of homes, I mean, if you want to limit, I guess it's a matter of.
It's a matter of the market.
I, um, I mean, okay, there's just some fire code, setback requirements.
Right.
Yeah, between buildings.
Between buildings, they gotta be able to get their ladder in between the buildings, so I have to get their truck in.
And, and not everybody wants to live in a, in a dense place like Shaker Village.
But that's why I'm saying the market.
Yeah, exactly.
Is, is what's going to make the difference.
Linda has a comment. Linda?
Yes, um, you know, you're talking theories here, but we have a reality around both of the lakes. And those theories don't work well around the lakes. We have people wanting to put in too many units on little tiny pieces, dividing pieces that shouldn't be divided around Mascoma and Crystal. So.
Well, I mean, but this wouldn't be town-wide. It was, there have to be specific areas of town this is permitted.
Yeah, and I think you guys have been talking about having different zoning requirements around the waterfront.
Yeah, I mean, that.
Well, for each zone should have its own set of regulations.
Right.
Right.
It shouldn't be this blanket, you know, where one size fits all.
Yeah, I, I, I think, you know, as a matter of principle, we're gonna say that the lake shores of the various lakes are set off on the side and, and treated separately when it comes to writing our, our zoning ordinances.
And you might even, well.
And subdivision.
You're never gonna have affordable housing on the lakes.
Right.
That's true.
I mean, it's there now, the camps, but it's, it stays in the family.
Right.
You just basically, what you got.
Yeah, but that's not affordable anymore.
Well.
You didn't get to.
The lake's pretty much developed.
I didn't get to it. I, I read the formula.
Yeah, I'm so dumb, just.
And we're talking about fifty or a hundred acres.
First, and, and you take this in anywhere you want, but satisfy the market for Airbnb rentals or short-term rents.
Yeah.
At some point, you're gonna satisfy that market because people are gonna realize, if I go to the trouble putting in this apartment or whatever, there's a point where there's too many rentals for the demand in the area. So satisfy, satisfy the vacation home market, satisfy the, um, folks that want the mansions. Uh, satisfy the, the short-term worker housing needs, uh, like visiting nurses and so forth. Uh, there's some student needs, they're a little less so in infield in South Hanover, Lebanon, but you know, satisfy those.
And whatever.
Well, well then you begin to satisfy the, the average blue collar worker and family. And then you, you even have enough surplus housing that you end up with with substandard housing that still exists. It wasn't well cared for. It's not, the owner doesn't, doesn't bother to take care of the property and then that apartment starts to rent for less and less money. And now you've got apartments that are available for low-income. That's how you create affordable housing. We just don't have that mix.
Right, that's the market.
It's out of balance.
Right, it's very much out of balance.
Has no control over.
Well, that's where we do, the lever, the few levers that we can pull, the zoning ordinance is one.
Right.
Yeah, but we can't make somebody build houses that are affordable to a certain group.
No, no, of course not, but.
No.
But at least we don't put hindrances into the, that, that. But at least we don't put hindrances into the that 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 natural capitalistic intent to to satisfy those domain.
Right, but it's, it's my experience is the developer is gonna build what's in their best interest. I mean, that's they're in it to do to turn profit.
The developer.
Unless it's not, unless their mission, they have a nonprofit mission to build a non-affordable housing or housing at a certain core group of people, their mission is to satisfy stockholders to make a profit. Um, and.
Well, yeah, because if they don't, it's all, it's gonna be the only development they ever do.
Yeah, right, yeah, that's right, it's it's, you know, it's just, that's their business.
Right, where's the demand come?
Right.
You know, it's, I can't figure that out because it's
Oh, the.
It's huge demand, but no houses being built. Uh, it sounds like, wait, does that, that's done on us?
But every ti- every time an apartment building is built in Lebanon, it's full before it's finished.
Right, yeah, right.
So there's obviously a need.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I.
Eh, exactly.
You know, it's the demands.
Have more. That's the problem is in the Upper Valley, two thousand a month, it's considered affordable housing, right?
But I don't know how many people are talking to you and then walking away when they see outrage, I don't know. We haven't had a real, any developments. When was the last time we had a housing development for this boy?
Well, we're talking to Larrity Farms, that's where.
Right.
And that was just a conceptual.
Like Tim, like you were saying the other day, I think it's the costs of overrun everybody.
Right.
You can't build a single-family home on a individual lot now for five hundred thousand.
Right.
I mean, that's not much, I mean, just just the, just the site work alone, driveway, septic system. That's a hundred K right there. Yeah, so that's, and that's why we're seeing mainly, uh, multifamily homes being proposed.
Yeah.
In large blocks.
Yeah, right.
Mm-hmm.
Because that's the only way you can afford to develop at this point.
But at some point, even that demand will get met.
Yeah.
And you'll end up with those rents starting to, starting to level off, I don't know if it'll ever drop.
Boy, I don't know. I I hear you, but I. W M R had a had a news, uh, uh, program a couple nights ago where they said rents gone up twenty-four percent.
Yep.
In New Hampshire.
Mm-hmm.
They said what's going on is rents in Boston are three thousand a month.
Right.
They come up here and they're happy to pay two thousand a month.
Two thousand, right.
And because.
And they're working from home.
And they're working from home.
Yeah, that was the other, that was that's groups.
That's what happened.
People were working out of work.
Yeah.
My my son is is, um, in Cambridge and he paid twenty-eight hundred for a not very nice boat.
Yeah. And and there's nothing you can do about, you you can't tell people, you you can't work from, you can't like work in Boston and live here, you you can't regulate all that stuff away. Short-term rentals, you could control it a bit, but you can't say no.
It's also, it's also gone up twenty-four percent because for two years they couldn't raise any rents.
Yeah.
During COVID.
And you get.
And the market's catching up.
Or kick people out.
Right, or not people out.
Yeah, and you get rentals of that kind of that kind of level.
Right.
And you have investors that realize, hey, I can buy that apartment building.
Yes.
Rent it.
Right.
Kick the people out, rent it, renovate it, rent it. And 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 really, there's too much money floating around.
Right.
That's going on.
I'll tell you another thing that I think is really holding us back right now. And I see this every day when people come in, I've got a list of surveyors.
Right.
Local land surveyors, give me some contacts, the people will call me back a couple weeks later like, I can't get these guys to call me back.
Scott's Scott's probably six months out.
It it just.
A year, probably.
Total shortage of professional services.
Yeah.
From from land surveying, septic system designing. And then go into the the trades, the building trades, builders, electricians, plumbers. We are seriously lacking in professional help.
Right.
But that's a huge drag.
I think that is slowing down right now very quickly.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Cuz I think contractors are looking for work right.
They're starting to, yeah.
Very.
And of course, the interest rate going up. Everything's cooling down.
Yeah, no one wants to spend money.
Yeah.
That's the thing is.
But the other side of that is if you're a contractor, do you wanna do a single-family home, would you rather do a large complex?
Yeah.
Well, you wanna do a large complex.
So why is this board, I wanna use the word fixated on increasing density, what? I'm not, but. Is it, is it, is it an attempt to address some some of the the affordable housing issue?
Well, I think it's, I think that's part of it, I also still think that if you if you have higher density and it's and it's in the where water and sewer is available, you're gonna have more people and when you have more people in a higher denser area, then the town can start to do some things like the coffee shop and like the.
The breaking commercial.
And and make it a destination, right now, we are not, you know, we're a destination for, um,
Johnson.
For recreation, right, for the trails and things like that, but people come, do their hiking and then they're gone.
Right.
There's no place other than Jake's that to go have a cup of coffee or anything, there's nothing there.
Right.
And there used to be when I was a kid, I mean, there was a little downtown center.
Right.
But, uh, that was, you know, people went to, but not anymore.
So I completely agree with all that and I think that you seem to be coming back, the answer is, uh, we need more houses.
Right. Well, I think it's a combination, it's a, it's a, it's a combination of answers.
Yeah.
And activities in order to improve what what we've got, right?
But our work, the thing that we've been dealing with.
Right, yes.
There's more housing.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, I mean, if you if you could fix the world, right, you'd lower taxes, right?
But you you can't, right, I mean, we all we all know this, but one of the things that people don't move here is they they can't afford to live because of that and other things, right?
Or retire.
Or retire.
And I would say to you, Tim, I mean, I'm looking at it to from my own hometown, but I think zoning in general has basically failed in a lot of respects because when when we set out at the beginning, in Plankton, we adopted zoning in like nineteen seventy-five. And we wanted village development, wanted people to, you know, higher density in the villages. But the absolute opposite has happened in in my town, and I think.
Right.
I make the argument here is that people have gone out into the hinterlands and and chopped down the trees and cut up the fields.
Right.
And put their little dream home in the middle of the field. They were in the forest and the villages are almost unchanged, I mean, in my town.
Right.
There in villages, just the way it was fifty years.
That's what the market wanted in nineteen seventy-five.
Changing things.
Still driven by the market.
Right, but the people also wanted to go to the mall.
Yeah.
Lebanon twelve eight became the mall.
Yeah.
I mean, it wasn't like a mall in the suburbs, but it was all the stores.
Trip mall.
In in one location.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And so it was just, I mean, it was basically market-driven, a lot of it.
And see, Rob, I I think you're, you're right, and what that, what is also done, and I think was one of the goals that might not have been spoken loudly back in nineteen eighties, whatever the zoning orders put together.
Yeah.
Was to slow development.
Yes, well, we certainly accomplished that.
We did.
Yeah.
We did, we did.
I'd go one step further and say it was to stifle development.
Yeah, well, it was.
It wasn't to slow it.
Right, when eighty-nine opened up in the ten years following.
Right.
The part, you look at the population graph.
Right.
For Anfield and the town, and the surrounding towns.
Right.
And it's like, yeah, um, and people pay.
Same same number of houses, right, or more.
There was a huge develop, I wasn't here at the time, but I've heard stories when I first moved here and got on the board that in the early, in the mid, in the eighties periods, there was all these developments being proposed.
False.
And like half of them, they were got built.
Right.
Because they were just bad ideas.
Yep.
And they and they just fell, just collapsed, people had even gone off the grounds. But there was just tons of development being proposed.
It's in here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's right in here, the village, the village plan idea that they show in this thing is in Fremont. I went there a week ago, there's nothing there cuz it was never built.
Yeah.
It was never built.
Really, we have to think what we do today is is we're trying to affect thirty years from now.
Right, yeah, right, right, yeah, cuz this is a thirty-year plan.
And, you know, at the.
The times is only get built once in a while.
Talked to during the master plan was that they wanted the downtown and sidewalks and they wanted people to, you know, a a destination where people could come to. Well, it's a lot harder to do than than it sounds.
Yeah.
It's awful hard to do.
But we don't, but we don't have to. It's, we don't have to accomplish that, I think what we have to do is enable it.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We we have to not implement zoning changes that will make it worse.
Right, right, and encourage the type of development.
Encourage the type of development we want.
Yeah.
Now, I mean, the only is it was the town spent all that money to put the sewer line down, we were poor. And I'm still waiting for development to happen.
Yeah. You got pieces of property that people don't wanna get rid of.
I mean.
And they don't wanna develop them.
It still comes back to whoever owns the property, what they want to do.
Right.
They wanna sit on it, sell it, or develop it.
Yeah.
And right now, they're just sitting on it.
Tell me what that house across halfway up the hill before you get Dunkin' Donuts, what does that wanna be?
Yeah.
Cuz it obviously isn't much right now.
Right, and same as the old.
But somebody owns it and they're, they're don't wanna, they don't wanna develop it, they don't wanna sell it, they don't wanna do anything.
Same thing. And then you have, then you have someone that buys a piece of property with grand ambitions, but it's the wrong piece of property.
Right.
Yes, right, your ideas don't fit the location or the lands. And it's like, well, sorry.
And it is, it is interesting, I mean, I would throw out a couple of great shining examples for you guys. And I'd say Lebanon would be right in that, uh, as a, as a, as a possible future example. Where, you know, the old days, you you wanted the mall way out on the outside of town in the big field and with lots of parking.
Yeah.
Concord, New Hampshire, the Steeple Gate Mall, and this huge mall out there, that sucker is empty, dead, nothing happening. But they went into the downtown in Concord.
Right.
And they dumped a bunch of money, streetscapes and put in a new parking garage. And all of a sudden, the downtown Concord is the place to be, it is.
The lost.
It is awesome. And same things happened in Lebanon, I mean, you've seen a little bit of that so far, but I would say in the next ten years, you're gonna see even more because the dry cleaner place, that's gonna be a hundred and eighty apartments.
Yeah.
Where the old, uh, village market was, there's, there's a whole bunch proposed there. And all of a sudden, you you drive in on a Thursday afternoon in Lebanon, when the farmer's market's going.
Right.
It's awesome, man.
Around the, around the green, you mean?
Yeah, people are in the downtown, it's vital.
It is.
And and let's save the the land out in the hinterlands, you know, Poverty Lane, I love Poverty Lane, Lebanon. Let's not build five acre lots out there, let's save some of that beautiful farmland and, uh, you know, forest and all that kinda stuff and and I think that's what's happening too, is that from the energy standpoint, it makes so much more sense to put the people together.
Yeah.
So the services are there, we're not gonna use as much, uh, energy for transportation, we're not gonna use as much energy for eating and cooling and all that kinda stuff. Put them in and actually increase the density, I think that's, to your point, or to your comment, Tim, as I think that's something that you guys need to plan for is how do we make this town more sustainable, how do we build in, um, you know, resilience into the town, and I think that might be part of the motivations for you guys.
Yeah, the, it's.
Do we, do we go along with this? So little one of the.
Hmm, there.
No, she's. Almost right.
I guess the question is, do we go one step further than that even? And set up areas where we want it to be developed and make it easier for developers to develop there?
Yeah, offer incentives.
Yeah.
And it talked about it in the other, you can offer incentives, you know?
We office, offer tax incentives now.
I I just, I don't, I don't like that concept though. I I I could probably come to like it, I suppose, but.
Well, I mean, what.
It's about what's being offered.
Right, you you.
Right.
You've got, you've got to figure out how badly you want to get to your end goal.
Yeah.
Well, I I I realize that.
And and what you're willing to do to encourage that.
But I think the reason I don't like it is, is not because it's not something we shouldn't do, it's just I don't think we should do it with a zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
In other words.
Okay.
If if we have the zoning ordinance.
How would you do it otherwise?
Well.
Taxes would be slight, boy. Um.
Yeah.
Well, yeah.
So tax breaks or?
Yeah.
It would be a tax breaks, uh.
Right.
You know, money trust, grants, I don't, I don't know, but you know, if you had a particular piece of par- parcel that you wanted to do something with, let's just make sure the zoning isn't a big hindrance to do.
Some mixed, some mixed-use housing on Route Four where we put the sewer in.
Well, I'm still, I'm still waiting for that.
That's what I'm saying.
You know, it's like.
What's the incentive?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, what's what's, what is preventing them from doing?
There's no incentive.
Denial.
Just a way.
The desire.
Well, is is there something in our zoning ordinance that that hindering it?
I don't think so.
Really.
No, we set that up to be mixed-use.
Yeah. I mean, I don't know if people.
I think people.
And saying, talking, doing that and seriously talking on, other than just what if, a lot of what ifs.
Yeah, Roshi Els is in the flood plain.
A lot of tire thing, yeah, the, uh.
That's the problem of theirs, like Roshi Els is a beautiful piece of property, but it's in the flood plain.
You know how you can eliminate that flood point?
Lower the dam.
It's a couple of boards.
Eighteen inches.
A couple of boards out of the dam, yes.
Exactly.
Which dam?
What's that?
Which dam?
Yeah.
Baltic, Baltic Mill. Oh, no, 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 uh, no, the problem's on the north side. The.
Why is that?
Because all the drainage that comes down from Longjoy Brook.
Yes, right, yeah.
Gets built up against that causeway, that railroad causeway.
Yeah, it's a dug, yeah, yeah.
It's a dug, and there's a very small hole through it.
Right.
Yeah.
Couple of small.
Part of it, but now you look at the flood maps, it's still.
You look, you lower.
The Massacre River itself.
Yeah.
Coming up. But.
Well. Yeah, and and for for our water well protection purposes, there should probably have never been anything built on that flat there.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that happened, but.
Right, yeah.
So I I completely agree with.
Yeah.
And put the swamp. Oh, I have a swamp.
Where will we go?
Oh, yeah, where are we going? As a whole, where are we going as a?
Yeah, we need to get back on track.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, uh, so what what if we sort of, is there anything we've we've kind of consensus on in a general sense? Seems like we all like the idea of of in the larger areas, in the rural areas, having conserved land and then portions buildable. So it doesn't matter what the numbers are.
Right.
Is that?
Yeah, I mean, I would be strongly in favor of the outskirts of town. What's currently we have as a five acre. Um doesn't have to stay five acre. We can that can be changed. We can make it bigger.
Mm-hmm.
And. And or either leave it at five acre then we and mandatory cluster developments. Kinda thing. Uh then you get into cover this one year, cover that next year type of issue too. So you have to. Think about that, how that part of events, something like that happening, you know, death by a thousand cuts type of thing. Um.
And and this would be one where we would tell the consultant, this is what we wanna have resulted.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
That sounded right.
Yeah, and how to write it so that doesn't happen. But if it is going to be. You know, a mandatory cluster developments. And you can you extremely reduce dense um setbacks. So you can do the cluster.
Mm-hmm.
And an affordable thing.
Yeah.
But but the backside has to be homeowner conserved.
Yeah, yeah.
Homeowner association conserved. Type of thing. Or you have it developed so that you can't build back there because the house is in the way.
Okay.
Here's, you know, there's no access.
Here's where I'm gonna get in trouble. Cause I'm gonna say something. What would you do with Lasalle?
I don't wanna. I have a suggestion.
The lowest the the lower part, the cleared area gets developed and the I don't know how far up the hill that property goes.
Not far.
To.
Not far.
To where the butts the fishing game, I don't know.
Not too far.
Yeah.
Just just the little ways up that flat field, not even on the slope.
Yeah.
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 So I I I think to for Shaker Village.
Right.
I think what Shaker Village just is to me, just flags are flying saying that we're a separate zoning district.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You know?
It is.
Oh, yeah. Issues to consider and various things there. And I think we oughta go to the. The people that live there, that have businesses there and um. We're gonna have a meeting with them, you know, what do you guys want?
What do you want there?
Community.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, the land that's still developed is other. I never really been through all those little private roads. Um but you had no business going down this way.
Right.
Right.
Been down there, so.
Probably really, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
They're real small lots.
Yeah, I know, I I.
Some of them aren't even quarter of an acre.
But it's pretty well done, I mean.
Much well done.
Yeah, yeah, and they probably all have waterfront access or.
Yeah, yeah, it's either haunted or they've got or they've got, yeah, deep, right.
If you got if you got the Lasalletts who are gonna be doing something with that property and 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 you know. Is will our zoning as it exists hinder some really good ideas that might be generated?
I mean, there is the sewer line that goes by now.
That's what I'm saying, it's.
Well, there's like a lot that far.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Goes all the way up to Lakeview.
Lakeview.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You could have a pop, you could have another.
Right.
Lakeview uh condos.
You could have.
The apartment, but.
Lakeview owns another twenty-five acres.
Right, a multi-unit, a multi-unit army complex, a complex, multi-unit complex.
Yeah.
Uh which rented of condos is the.
Where were they?
Doesn't matter to us.
No, I mean, you you meant somewhere along that line.
Well, in the Lasalletts.
Oh, Lasalle, the same, or the other twenty-five acres that Lakeview owns.
I don't know if they have the. Not sure whether they have any any more buildable land there.
They may.
Oh, you're talking about the Lasalle.
Lasalle, Lasalle, yeah.
Lakeview, I think they put their septic up there now, so it's probably not.
Yeah, well, anyway, that's to me, that's that's a that's another in infield center.
Right.
But maybe that's a a separate little zoning.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I.
Oh, yeah.
I think it's always it always acted like it was its own little.
Yeah.
District. So I think it should be zoned.
As much as people hate it, there's nothing wrong with spot zoning.
Yeah.
It really isn't. When you find something that you think should be there.
Yeah.
Then zoning will get happened.
It's gonna be reasonable and well thought out. That's the key.
Yeah.
Gotta be really well thought.
Things like we had a. Couple come and wanted to. Subdivide an adjacent lot to make his lot a little bigger.
Right.
Remember that?
Yeah.
It was like, yeah, I know what the zoning ordinance says, but dang it, they they should be able to do that. It just felt. It's just felt.
That's right.
But we we our hands are tied.
Yeah, our hands are tied, yeah.
Anyway.
Although. I did that. I bought twenty feet.
Right, you had to get a variance to do it.
I had to get a variance to do it. It made my lot larger and my neighbor's lot smaller.
Mm-hmm.
But it got through.
Right, right, right. Cause it made sense.
Hmm.
Both are like a point.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you kidding? My whole house aren't gonna.
Because the 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 lot line had a brook. That.
Well, I was using I was using their land thinking that I owned it.
Right.
And we had a discussion one day and we said, Jesus, I don't buy that.
You were cutting his grass.
Exactly. And cutting his trees too.
Yeah.
Very nice people.
Yeah.
Let me ask you this. Lakeside. What area is? Do you do you do you see that each lake would be a separate or would they be treat each?
I think Meskoma should be separate.
It's gotta be separate because of the water.
Each one would have a different. Different set of regs.
Yeah, you got, yeah.
Well, I think Crystal and Spectacle would be very similar.
There's more land around both of them. The lots are bigger.
Yeah. The Meskoma because of its size.
Right.
Um.
Three, three, three lakes.
That's a three, I would say you'd make a you'd make it and you you probably use the same, you're right.
Those are the ones with the waterfront lots, so yeah. Yeah, I'm looking at the map and the old ones.
And then the other question is how far back from the water do you go?
Well, that's.
Right? You said that last time.
Yeah.
And that's gonna be really interesting.
Yeah, it's gonna be a big.
That's the big decision.
Oh, yeah.
That is.
A lot of a lot of thought put into that.
Yeah.
I mean, you have the shoreline protection. You know, the fifty foot is no no build zone.
Right.
That's already, so that's right out.
Right.
But then there's the.
One fifty.
You're right, then there's that other dimension.
Yeah.
But then we have to look at where the road is on the places too.
Yeah, many of the roads are close to the one fifty.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
And do we go? Right, I mean, that's something we have to sit down and. Any luck on the tax maps and? You know, this question? I was talking to.
First by murder.
Yeah, maybe I didn't ask you directly. Oh, getting even eleven by seventeen copies of the tax maps. Yeah, it's small though. I saw eleven seventeen.
Yeah, that is eleven seventeen. Looks small though, doesn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, can we? Get something like that blown up?
Blow it up, yeah.
So each page is, that was the whole. How many sheets are up there?
Six.
Six. Okay, yeah.
We thought it was gonna be four, but the printer did it on six.
Yeah. Oh, can't make it as big as one.
I think we can play with it and maybe improve that.
Yeah.
Yeah, but even just the set of um the printouts, the eleven by seventeen printouts. And I can get home, just start writing down acreage. To give us something to work with.
Yeah.
Where do you want to take the acres?
Yeah, yeah, it's on the tax cards. The acreage per lot.
Right.
To get a sense of what size we're looking at.
I think the natural resource is that. There's a list of the all of lots and how big they are.
Yeah.
Seeing that in before.
Now, the I want to tell what e- each lot. Has its own acreage. I want be able to write down the acreage on each lot.
Yeah, yeah. That's what you want, but that's what you, well, I don't know what.
Yeah, I don't. Yeah, I don't resource as that detail.
So is there any reason to have uh? We have a R three, right?
Yep.
And R five.
Mm-hmm.
Does anyone know why we have two separates? Because.
Cause the point you gotta wear them downtown.
But they do.
Yeah.
What year was I was seventy-nine?
No, no, ninety-one.
Ninety-one was zoning.
We were late to the game, right? In eight year.
Why did why R three around the lake? I mean, that's just nuts.
Cause it was further away from town.
Yeah, with with the.
That was the basis.
That was the basis.
That was the basis. Three, R five.
Right, right, I mean, look at that.
History is it was kind of a thought set, right?
They just, I mean, it's it's color code, you just look at the.
They softened it to sell, right? Yeah, cause they tried it a couple of times. They it was like the third time that it got.
Right, right, and you look at, you know, the. With Meskoma Lake is I want the orange or whatever.
Right.
And then yellow, then green.
Right.
And just it was just draw the line here.
Right.
So the orange is one, yellow is two, and green.
No, no, one, three, five.
One, three, five. There's no two.
Two, no two.
Orange is one.
Oh, why did miss?
Yellow was two and green is bad.
Then there's probably no reason to change the conservation district.
I don't think so. That's largely conservative. That's five thousand acres of almost total.
I mean, I live in Spent Pond Road area.
Right. Couple of spots.
But there's only a few spots left there.
Yep. On Spent Pond.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going up the road there.
Right.
I mean, there's very few.
That and the golf course.
Yeah.
So to summarize, we've got. Potential zoning districts of Enfield Center, Shaker Village, Enfield Village. The Lakeside is three, Meskoma, Crystal, Crystal and Spectacle. All the last two may be really similar.
Yeah.
The rural area. Conservation district.
And and Route four. CB Route four, I mean, I would combine CB Route four.
The clubs, absolutely.
So that is just.
One big.
One business district.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
A lot of business districts and. Um. And what I mean, housing, I don't know, you unless it's a mixed use.
I think mixed use rather than.
Just just business, just.
Yeah, I think that's a that's a trend.
Right.
Yeah.
The old days, it was like, you don't wanna live where you work. Nowadays, absolutely wanna live where we work.
Well, it's a type of business that's so that's.
So you use the you use the regs that are on the the uh Route four district.
Yeah, yeah.
As opposed to the regs that are on the.
Yeah, they just extend. The rest of the rest of uh Route four to.
All the way to the town, why?
Yeah.
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 In both directions.
Mm-hmm, exactly, yeah. Now, the other thing is, I mean, you mentioned it and I was talking to my wife today about uh Baltic Mill. Right now, it was actually a spot zone in the in the rigs.
Yeah.
That's carved out as a industrial.
Right.
In my understanding, that mill is no longer functioning.
That is true.
As a power plant.
Hasn't been, he I don't think he can get parts.
I thought he made parts.
Yeah, I don't know. He's not he's not making any electric.
But he but even even if he isn't, it's nothing's been happening there for fifty, forty years.
Right, yeah.
Um other than falling down.
Yeah, right.
Um.
He just keep it in the Route four district and it's a non-conforming.
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
But what we wanna end up with is someone's got some money and some good idea and we don't wanna be in their way.
Right, right.
I know.
Right.
Exactly.
Right. Which is why the Route four district would do that.
Yeah.
Wouldn't be in there. There'd be nothing there that would be in their way if they wanted to pull in.
Right, you can go draw the lines or it goes to the river.
Right.
Basically.
Right.
So. And then we encompass.
Because that one.
The street and.
So.
The kayak hasn't started. They haven't done anything since they came.
Significantly different enough that Main Street wouldn't be part of that? What about Main Street? It should be part.
Yeah, no, that's.
Yeah.
I don't know. I mean, that's, yeah, I would, I mean, no, to me, Main Street is the downtown village area.
Right.
Okay.
What about uh around the highway exits? Then right now, it's a commercial industrial zone.
Right, right, and then your highway exits, um.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can. And that's where you want your hardcore industrial stuff, your truck stops.
Right.
You're.
That's what we got.
You're you're paying fuel and diesel. Right, right. Things that are things that are eighteen wheeler requirements. Are 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 very noisy. Uh the sawmill, the park, the park, the uh.
The industrials.
The um park of steel. Type of place.
Mm-hmm.
Should be out there.
You play our slaughterhouse.
I don't hope it's access.
A slaughterhouse.
Yeah.
You don't wanna hear them pick squeals. But they have people there. We could use a slaughterhouse.
Yeah, we'll leave those in Canaan.
Okay. You wanna read back your list, Tim? All right, um so commercial industrial zones around I eighty-nine.
Yep.
CB Route four, a combo. Um. The village, Enfield Village. Trying to go in sort of order here, um.
Lakes.
The lakes.
Okay.
The rural area. Conservation district. Baker Village, Enfield Center. Eight.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah, I mean. The conservation, I mean, would probably be just easier just to leave it as is.
Yeah.
Well, he may adjust the elevation line or just even just, that doesn't seem to be.
That doesn't.
Hasn't really been a big deal.
No, and it's.
Just leave it as it is.
And it consists of both private and in uh.
Lot of fishing game, lot of uh, yeah.
Yeah, conservative land, land twice property now.
Yeah.
But I mean, it's.
All that empty property.
Is there, is there private land in the area too?
The golf course.
The golf course is private now. Everything around Smith Pond is private.
Yeah.
That could be a small zone of some sort that's not, you know, just carved out of the conservation way at all.
Well, we can.
I mean.
Yeah, we can.
Yeah, I, right now, I'm I'm in favor of maybe adjusting the line slightly, but just leaving the permitted uses as is.
Yeah. I mean, Dr. Baker's pretty much conserve that pretty well up there.
Yeah.
He's done a great job.
Mm hmm, but you have, you know, pretty often you get next owner.
Right.
And if the golf course decides to sell.
Yep.
What what might happen there?
Yeah.
It'll be a couple of big mansions or one big mansion, maybe.
So. Without a consultant. Um. Can we make headway on on defining these boundaries?
I'd like not to because part of the, or my conversations with Brandon. Who, knock on wood, is going to be our consultant. Um. Her take, having done this with other towns in the past, is if you're gonna be. Redrawing zoning districts or adding new ones. Public input. Public meetings is the key to buy it. And I would not want our board to come out and. Even suggest temporary or potential new zoning districts. Without that public um. Engagement part of the process.
I'm confused about that because say we have a public meeting right now. We put up the map, we start asking the public, where do you wanna draw the line? Well, it's, I mean, I've been said, I mean, we have to, to me, we have to present the public with something.
Yeah, you gotta bring.
This is what we're looking at. And what do you think? Are we way off base here?
I I I agree that you gotta present the public with something. I would rather that we have discussions with our consultant. And that the consultant do the.
Best way to approach it. Is what, best way to approach it, that's what you wanna ask her.
Yeah.
Cause I I think there's there's.
Okay.
Right, because probably we gotta bring something that that the public can respond to.
Mm hmm.
Right?
Yeah.
How do you do that? And how how deep do you go with that is the question?
I mean, you know, she she and I have talked about um rather than big public meetings. Having a series of small neighborhood meetings. Um, you know, maybe you have fifteen or or so people or. Ten people around the table like this or somebody's living room. Um. And. I I would just assume. Get her input on it before we start drawing lines, even tentatively.
What's the schedule of that?
I mean, that's.
The the skid, okay, let's let's back up the trolley for just a second.
Yeah.
Um. We have to finish writing the grant and Rob and I are gonna be. Putting our heads together probably sometime next week. I've done. A lot of work on it, uh I'm not happy with it yet, I've got. I've got some more tweaking to do, which hopefully I'll be able to do tomorrow and Friday. And then Rob and I are gonna get together and put our collective wisdom into it. The grant has to go, yeah, we'd probably wind up doing a preliminary review with the grant people. And ask them what is needed.
And this is the state.
Yeah.
Okay.
And then they would come back to us and tell us how to tweak it. It might take a couple of, couple of maybe three weeks.
Yeah, yeah.
Then we submit the grant proposal. They turn it around in somewhere in the six to eight week timeframe.
Oh, okay.
Then we have to hire a consultant and. You know, I'm I'm looking to start if we're very lucky in the summer.
Yeah.
Um, I've kind of changed my. Timeline on this whole project and, you know, I was hoping we'd be able to present it. In. Twenty. In in twenty-four.
Yeah.
And now I'm thinking twenty-five.
Yep.
And that's probably optimistic.
We get getting the public feedback pieces, I, as we, as we know from the master plan, is the majority of the time.
Yeah.
It's a big chunk of time.
Yeah.
So, you know, this is, it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
Yeah.
Well, it probably. Actually, I don't wanna interrupt you, keep going.
What?
Well, I'm 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 thinking, okay. Timeline. Uh, March of twenty-five, get new zoning ordinance in front of the town, hopefully it passes. In the meantime. Um. We probably ought to have an effort this this year to uh propose some additional zoning amendment changes for existing ordinance. If we see the need, um there may be some things that we could do to. You know, polish up some loose ends or whatever that might be helpful. Um, but I think that date by which we want that completed, we need to set down, tell everybody. So I really don't wanna have happen like what we had this year, we're just really late in the season and. When we were trying to. Write amendments and just, it's just too rushed.
So if we start with our September work session. That'll give us September, October.
It's gonna be August.
And November.
It's too late.
I've got a better idea, but why don't we start it now? Because we're saying for the next three months. We haven't got a consultant.
Good point.
Right, yeah.
If we've got him, if we've got him ready by the time we get the consultant. Then all we have to do is have the have the public hearings in January. We've got him ready to go. We can, we'll get, we'll have him written.
So what should we? Any ideas?
Yeah, well, I get. Um, the cell tower one is up way out of dates. Um. The gravel pits, I don't know if that falls on us as a select board, is that an ordinance? We can work on it though.
It's, oh, it's part of us.
But it, I mean, that.
Yeah.
Is way out of dates.
Parking.
Um, parking.
Started that when we.
We started parking.
Yeah, but it's, well, I mean, parking is gonna be where we're businesses are.
Can we get Phil in?
What's that?
Can we get Phil in in April or May?
Right, right, and just.
To come up with any of the ones that are based on fire?
Right, right, and just get that.
Get that cleaned up.
Right, just figure out what.
Because that.
What do we wanna do with? You know, fire.
Right, that has nothing to do with zoning district.
No, no, that's sort of like everywhere, townwide.
Right.
Um, don't do, whatever you decide, here's your limitations.
Right.
For fire departments, requirements. Um, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, there is things like that. There's probably, I think it was a bonus too, but. I don't know, I can think of it off the top of my head.
Why don't we do some more thinking and let's make a list at our. Next meeting, the April work session. And Rob, can we invite Phil for April?
Sure.
Just so we get that piece.
Yeah.
Those building heights and radio, so we had private roads, um which. You know, length of road, length of dead end roads.
Yeah.
There's issues of fire department.
Yep.
Yeah. Um. The closeness of, if we're gonna do density housing, uh structures. Of close, what comes, what's the minimum? Yeah, what's the ma- minimum setback that we can go to?
Right.
Mm hmm. And I, and I, and with all these topics about from the fire department, I hope we end up with not just having had a meeting with Phil.
No, no.
But that we have a letter. Or from the town, the town manager. That summarizes what the fire department wants, something we can put as an appendix or in the file.
Mm hmm.
You know, that ten years from now, we, why why did we do this setback? Well, it's because of this.
Well, if someone goes to the Z B A and says, I want something closer, and they have something to fall back on.
Right.
Sure.
Okay.
Um. What are we doing next?
Mister Chairman.
Uh, next in this meeting? Or next?
We had mapping.
In our process, okay, mapping, so that was our first attempt.
Yeah.
Um. We can try to make it bigger.
I mean, Nomacopy can make it as big as you want, almost as big as you want.
Yeah, but you lose resolution when you start to make it bigger. I mean, you look at that map there, it's very fuzzy when you look at.
What's, well, is that simply because of the printer or the format that it went in? I mean, I would assume that whoever CIA or CIS, whatever.
It's all, it's all vector going in, so in theory, you should be able to. Draw it up as big as you want.
It just be the printer.
Right, it could just.
That it was used.
Yeah.
Well, because when I was at Nomar, I had a copy that I did off the, a standard printer.
Yeah.
And it was like, eh, it's okay. Then I had, I gave them the pile to make a, another version.
Yeah.
It was like, oh, oh, wow.
Yeah.
Yeah.
How big do we want?
How big do you want?
Get rid of all that margin.
Yeah, well, it's not there. I mean, I mean, that size.
Yeah.
Full, just the town, that size, and you can, you know, twist it so it's, it doesn't need to be angled to.
Right, right.
And just, so it's your compass bearing.
Well, I think you, you should make it no, no, no taller than what you can reach.
Right.
So.
Yeah, but you just take.
A little high.
Well, you lower the whole thing down.
And well, what I'm saying is the bottom of it should be down here, so that's like fourteen.
Right. Yeah.
By whatever the proportional length is, four by four, four by six.
I mean, we're not a square town, are we?
We're not.
No.
Yeah, but.
It works out to like five by six.
Right, yeah.
What I have been working with.
But that sounds good.
That sounds good.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, it's, you don't need the color, so you just do black and white, so Nomacopy is probably be like ten bucks. You know, just a trip to hand over and.
Well, and then. So let me get you a paper copy, but you may wanna print it on something we can dry erase.
Well, well, I mean, the town does the eleven by seventeens, and you can do that on a PR copier. Yeah, but those are individual sheets, but.
What I mean is to be able to, to to put some, some dry erase marker.
Yeah, that's, that's the original plan. And town manager has decided that Rob ought to get some competitive pricing on it.
Right.
From two or three vendors. And Rob was on vacation since.
Can't we believe we let him go on vacation?
Yeah, I know.
And we can also get a roll of acetate put over that too.
Right.
It'd be a double A.
Yeah, yeah, I actually have a roll of, I'm like. I don't, I have to test it to see what I can mark on it and erase.
Yeah.
But I have a roll of clear plastic that, just sitting in my closet.
Okay.
Picked up somewhere.
We could jury rip something.
Yeah, yeah.
Like.
Does somewhere mean Hitchcock?
Yeah. My office supplies. Place is just a money pit. Oh, I don't like this, throw it out, next guy, next, next officer, oh, I need some, I need that, I'm gonna buy it now online.
Large organization, and you ask why your health bills.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, um, so that's where we are on the mapping thing, um. We still really haven't addressed what Kurt wanted, which was things that people can take home. But hopefully, you know, we'll be able to. Play with it and get, you know, either get it larger or get Norman to do something that's.
Mm hmm.
You know, like the twenty-four by thirty-six size.
Mm hmm.
And. And do it cheaply.
Yeah.
Um. Let's see. We talked about the grant.
Yeah.
Downboat?
What? Downboat.
Yeah.
Yeah. So. All of our zoning amendments sailed through.
Yeah.
And. Tim had raised the question to me, did we get any questions or feedback? On the articles? So I'm gonna pass that on to the board. Did any of our constituents reach out to any of you with any questions or comments?
At all?
No.
I think the only, the only ones we got was at the candidates night.
Yeah.
I think that was the, the, that was the only time that we got any feedback at all on them.
Right.
And that was prior to the election.
Really?
I think the answers were. Consistent, and I didn't see it as a big. I didn't see a a large number of people on any of them, other than, I mean, it was almost the, the one at the, the meeting. Was on the uh hundred foot setback, on the uh. On wetland, yeah.
Yeah.
That was the one that.
But that, that, that whole conversation got.
Right.
Kind of off into, off into the weeds.
I mean, I think everything was passed at the town meeting, right? Oh, yeah, it was passed.
Everything. Well, the town force was delayed.
Right, but we meet on the ballot stuff, all the ballot stuff course, well, yeah, the, and the other thing.
So you guys completely proved me wrong. Remember, I was, I was saying we needed to explain because people wouldn't understand. Well, it turns out, they trust.
They didn't understand.
Some people noticed, some people voted no, but more people voted yes. By a considerable margin.
Yeah.
I mean, you know.
I'm shocked about the um.
Yeah, you know.
I can start with.
So, so.
And then we can go.
Well.
Yeah.
Could there? And. Kurt and I went to select board, and I agree with what Kurt said, in the past, there's been five or six that said no. And there's been, there have been year, there have been. Years where it, it was on a voice vote too.
Yeah, there's more, more said no this year in the budget than it's had in.
Long time. Well, and I brought it up to the select board, you know, those numbers were real close to what the, what the buildings were. The same people who voted against the buildings probably voted against the budget.
Yeah.
Because they know what the expensive buildings are gonna be in future years.
So, what, what, is there a calculation on the average increase in taxes for that past operation? Operating budget?
Could, could we just?
Sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What else is there to say on the zoning?
Okay, so a follow up on this, so we now have, we now have the two eighty U things. Right, you can do that, right?
Right.
Mm hmm.
Um. And I don't know whose role this is, but we, somehow the town has gotta promote that. Um. I had two separate. Handouts, one from the A A R P about ADUs, the other was from, I think, the Housing Authority or something about ADUs. And they're, they're available to be adapted to the town's current requirements. And. And I, I think the word just needs to get out there, folks, do you realize that now you can, you can put a bomb and pop, or I'm sorry, a mother law. Shit out in your backyard.
Right.
Um. Either here's Rob's number, this is how to get started and so forth.
Put it in the town newsletter.
Yeah.
The April one.
Yeah, I mean, I think if someone is looking to do that, they're gonna be. Hopefully stopping by, Rob, and talking to the building inspector.
I've already taken a lot of calls since this last week.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
Now that, I wanna hear about.
Right, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, just having it on the ballot, they say, oh, ADUs, can I do that?
What, what?
Yeah, the problem is, there were only four hundred people that voted.
Yeah, they can and can't do that with, with changes.
I don't know about it yet. Yeah, and that's, there's actually more people who will get the newsletter than voted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, but.
And do they like what, what you're able to tell them?
Yeah, I like what I'm able to tell them too, and I think we've really shown leadership. Yeah, I would love to, I mean, I will, I'm gonna work my angles with Valley News on just trying to get a little more, I mean, they did a little follow up.
Yeah.
But it was just sort of a tertiary, you know, articles passed at town meeting, instead of. Infields addressing the housing crisis in a serious way.
Right.
And. I think that they, we do deserve a little bit more of a treatment from them.
Mm hmm.
But, yeah, I mean, the word is out, there's definitely, I I took, just since I've been back from my vacation. I bet I've had ten calls.
Really?
Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
That's just since yesterday, right?
Yeah, they're back this week, that's it.
That's how we, that's. It was kinda like anything. You know.
Had to have a civic system designed.
Plumbing's a tricky one.
Yeah.
A design.
Yeah, they have a design.
Yeah.
Uh, you have to build, you have to have a design.
With an approved. So, there's also still a bill pending at the state, right?
There's one that that'll make it uh two eighty U statewide.
Okay, and as I recall, it doesn't really change what we did all that much, except I think it increased it a thousand square feet.
Right.
Eight hundred.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll probably need to update that.
And I'm not sure if the state one says you could have more than one detached. I don't know.
I believe it did.
It did, I, yeah, the original one with the four did.
Yeah, and.
But this may too.
And I think the only reason we said one attached and one detached was because. Of the state requirement that one of them be attached.
Right.
And we couldn't, we didn't have any choice.
We didn't have any choice.
Right.
Yeah.
You could have two attached, but you couldn't have. Right. Well, I'm not sure if that's, if the state one won't get approved. Cause I, I have a feeling, I mean, the other one didn't even make it out of committee. With the four.
Yeah. Yeah, that might have been a little too ambitious for here.
Well, let's.
That's my, you know, was being pushed by part of states. Developments.
Oh, I'm, I'm about. Well, anyway.
Yeah, I know, I'm. I don't know why it didn't pass. The people who I thought would be in favor of it were not the ones who were. Cause if I was in the North Country, I'd say, sure, go ahead, cause it doesn't affect me, cause I don't have municipal sewer.
Yeah.
Well. Anything else anybody wants to talk about? Next meeting, April twelfth.
Any public hearing?
It's a work session.
What was today?
A work session.
This was, this was a bonus.
Oh, this is a bonus work session.
Cause we had no public hearings.
Okay.
And, and I think we had agreed.
Yeah.
Months back, that if there were no public hearings, or if there was time.
Yeah.
After the public hearing, we.
Have we got it?
Continue our discussions.
I'm working on a couple.
Coming up.
Uh, that I was expecting, actually, I was expecting for, for today.
Right.
It didn't come, that was the uh Lovejoy Brook uh store.
Storage.
Yeah. Um, I talked to Dan about it today, David, there is a uh. Upcoming meeting that basically conflicts with our first meeting in June. I would like to suggest that we um not have a meeting on that day, because it's the Upper Valley Lake Sunday. Regional planning's annual meeting, which will be at Eastman. And I would love for some of us to go, I would, I would love to go, um. That's always a good sort of update general on what's going on in the upper valley from a planning standpoint. Uh, so that's the fourteenth of June. Um, so.
That's my birthday, I would agree, we should not.
I think it's the first, the first meeting for us in June.
Yeah. Yeah.
And it just happens to conflict with their meeting. Yeah, it's the fourteenth. If someone wanted to go, I'd go with you.
Sure.
It's usually a free dinner. They usually have a keynote speaker and it's gonna be at Eastman. Which is real easy for us to get to from here, as you know.
You don't get lost once you get.
Well, the log route, take them right.
Yeah. To Bear Road.
To Bear Road. Take a lot around the lake a few times.
Put it into your road around the lake.
Exactly, that's what you're looking for.
I got a one, a new item.
Yeah.
Just caught up. Um, I was after, also at the select board meeting the other night, and they had a lengthy discussion regarding taking of minutes. And the level of detail. Um, at. More, I got the impression it was more. Well, I really shouldn't say about it, but I couldn't figure out if it was just for their minutes, or they were looking at.
Everybody.
Everybody minutes. And Stan and Simon and Sally brought up the fact that, um. When land use boards need detailed minutes.
Right.
Because if we have to go to court, we have to justify our actions. And I just wanna bring that up, and I have been saying multiple times, and other people have been quite happy and quite impressed with Whitney's.
Right.
Minutes there, and like to, I personally like to see that continue.
Yes.
Not get down to one line items. We had a discussion, period.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the way our minutes have to be because.
Well, they should. And you should read some of the old minutes.
There's, there's two, two different things that were happening that night. The one thing is, everything, something has to be posted within five business days.
Well, well, that was that whole.
It does not have to be the detail.
Yeah.
Um. Has to be available. Well, yeah, but, you know, and that's where we got into the discussion of available means put them online. Don't make people walk down to the town office and get, get.
Right, and then I.
And all it has, and all that has to say is who was at the meeting, what motions were made, whether they were approved or not. But that doesn't mean those are the, gonna be the minutes that you're going to be voting on. You then have the, the detailed minutes for the next me- minute or not.
Well, I, 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 I agree with all that, and particularly if we're, if we're having a hearing. Whether it's conceptual or whatever. Yes, uh, every T crossed and I dotted and everything said for us. For the last hour and a half. Right now, we've been sort of in a free-ranging discussion here, and. I don't know that. I think what we wanna create out of what we've just talked about for the last couple of hours, is a summary. That we can then use next week, the next time we meet, to say, okay, this is. This is what we seem to have agreed on. Uh, is this about right? And, and, and if it is, then okay, then we continue on.
Yeah.
But I don't know that it needs to be. Well, it's careful in the minutes.
Well, see, right, so I would bump that to Whitney. Um, you, what would you prefer, like that we're used to tonight? There was no public hearing, so there was no like, he said, she said. We agreed, we quiet. Um, you would, I don't know what your method is for doing this, but. Would you wanna just continue the way you're doing it, cause that's what you're comfortable with, or versus reducing it and making it easier?
Yeah, so I'm flexible. Uh, if there's a preference to do it one way sometimes over the other, I truly could go either way. Um, I just happen to keep doing them very detailed regardless. Uh, zoning board especially really likes detail.
Yeah, two words misses, two words misses on the zoning board at the time, and it was like, oh my god.
Yeah, but, um, it's, it's not a problem for me to tighten things up either. Like, I'm here anyway, and I'm okay with typing things along. And if everyone's like, oh, I'd really like to shorten this up, delete, it's a big deal for me.
But if you're just typing away and you, I mean, it's.
Well, if it's more work to reduce it, which is.
Really fine, but when it comes to reviewing the minutes, the next time, then you're looking, you look at this hour's worth of conversation.
They're really long journey.
It doesn't take an hour to read them.
The tone of what we were saying may, may not get reflected the way it, it's not really word for word. So I'm just saying that I, I think we can be a little more flexible on that, that part.
You're right.
Hello? Hi. I, I think that Whitney's doing a great job, and there've been times when we were glad to have the detail. And uh, other years, we haven't had so much detail, and I think we're in a better position the way it is. I, I wouldn't go to condensing it.
I'm not gonna stand on this hill and die on it.
Because you, someone can argue just the opposite when it gets too condensed that something was missed.
Well, and the, the, the real idea of the select board was, there are minutes that haven't been posted in six or eight months.
Right.
That was the, that was the real thing.
Right.
They got down to specifics and everything, but the overarching thing was, there hasn't been a TIF meeting. Minutes in five years.
And some of the other boys are way behind also.
And, yeah.
And.
Trustees of the trust fund haven't posted anything in over a year.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah, I mean, that issue is, that's definitely a, a serious issue. I mean, if I was the five days goal and what gets posted.
Right.
In five days, um. I mean, if I went down to the, with the all tomorrow and asked for those minutes, and where are they, they're gonna tell me they're not available.
Right.
So.
Right, but you got five days, so.
Yeah.
To post something.
I mean, you're usually pretty good about.
Rob is usually really good about asking me. Well, my last baby is almost a year old, and so my life is a little bit less chaotic now.
With the public hearings, I mean, especially if we had a decision.
Right.
And it's gonna be appealed.
Right.
Whoever's appealing needs to see those minutes.
Oh, yeah.
To make that appeal, and the clock is ticking. They only have so many days, and if they lose ten days because we're slow getting those five day minutes out.
Right.
They're gonna be mad at us, and they're gonna have a reason.
And the other thing is, I think people, when, what people are looking for is select board minutes.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Rob, how frequently do you usually post the video?
I try to do that within the first couple of days after the meeting.
Right.
So, yeah, that's, that's, you know.
Yeah, is that a link on the webpage?
Yes, you can get it on.
Enfield's webpage.
Yeah.